The Montgomery County School Board back to order. Need a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to certify that only the items discussed in closed session were those items that were in the enabling motion and only those items in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act.
So moved.
Roll call please.
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. We have one motion out of closed session. I need to seek a motion for that.
Yes, I move that we admit student A, starting tomorrow, September 4th, to Montgomery County Public Schools.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Allbritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. That concludes all the items out of closed session. The next item on our agenda is public address, and this is where the board sets aside thirty minutes with a maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the board on items of educational interest. And at this time, we have one person signed up, and that person is Jenny Mashu. I hope I say that, pronounce that name correctly. They have left, okay?
Oh.
Alright. So, since they have left, no one else has signed, on the agenda signed up, so I'll open it up to the audience. Please step forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Kelly Pleasant. I live at twenty-seven thirty-seven Old Fort Road in Blacksburg. And looking at this evening's agenda, I noticed that there was going to be discussion later on about citizen participation of addressing of the board, and so I would just ask, please, if you could consider clarification on Policy Five, One Point Three, which also states that the school board shall offer time at its meetings for employee organizations to be heard. Just a clarification of that statement as well. I would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? Please step forward, state your name and address. See no one, public address is now closed. Next item on our agenda is the, let me get to it, consent items. Need approval for consent items. Anything want to pull or review or question related to consent? You see there's field trips, and then there is two grant proposals. Hearing none, those items are now approved on consent. Next item on the agenda is the personnel report. Need a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the personnel report? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
By your action this evening, you have appointed a new supervisor of fine arts. Ms. Annalise Mayer is with us this afternoon. Annalise, if you'd stand and let us congratulate you on your appointment this evening. We welcome you to Montgomery County Public Schools. Annalise has spent about sixteen years in Henrico Schools, and she's going to be working half-time at Blacksburg High School in the art department there, and then spend the remainder of her day coordinating our fine arts program. And I believe you have your husband with you this evening. Mr. Mayer, delighted to have you with us as well, welcome. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Next item on our agenda is payment of the bills. Seek a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills as presented? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills have been paid. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Our first agenda item this evening is a presentation from the Montgomery County Educational Foundation. We have Ms. Connie Froggett with us this evening. The Montgomery County Educational Foundation has as its purpose financial support to enable students, teachers, and administrators to discover, advance, and enhance educational opportunities in addition to those that can be provided by the resources of Montgomery County Public Schools. Welcome Connie.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn, school board members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to update you on the progress of the Montgomery County Educational Foundation, your foundation. The MCEF is a public-private partnership between Montgomery County Public Schools, the school board, the community at large, which is why our board of directors includes the superintendent and a school board member appointed by you, the school board. Currently, that member is Ms. Sarah Woolsey. As your educational foundation, we feel it is our responsibility to you and your constituents to publicly report to you on the state of the foundation.
Thank you.
It was December of two thousand and eleven when we last stood in front of you to give you a progress update, and we have a lot of good news to report. You may recall, we had developed our mission statement at that time, which states, "Our mission is to provide financial support to enable MCPS students, teachers, and administrators to discover, advance, and enhance educational opportunities." We have expanded our scope since then to also include PTAs and PTOs as well. We believe an investment in our schools is an investment in our community. We developed goals to serve as guidelines when developing policies and procedures such as our new bylaws that were just drafted and our grant-award process. We use these goals to direct our efforts and to keep us focused on our mission. When we last updated you, we had established a relationship with the Community Foundation of the New River Valley to manage and invest our endowment and pass-through funds. This slide defines how that relationship works. The pass-through fund, shown here, is what currently supports our grant program. Grant distributions are awarded from this fund. The MCEF board may also vote to move funds from the pass-through to the endowment. The endowment fund, which you see over here, is what secures our future. This fund will eventually make the MCEF grant program totally self-supporting. It is invested in the market by the Community Foundation, and yields from these investments are returned to the MCEF as distributions for grant awards. When we last presented to you, we had five directors on our board, and four of them were MCPS employees or board members. Today, we have fourteen directors, which include representatives from all four strands in the county. Some of them are here with us tonight, and I would like to ask them to stand and be recognized. Not only does our board now include the superintendent, the school board appointee, and several MCPS employees, but also retired MCPS teachers, PTA and PTO officers, business leaders, a community foundation board member, representatives from our two local universities, and the director of the Silving Learning Center in Christiansburg. Our board members are well-versed in the challenges that face our public schools today, and they are meeting those challenges head-on. In the eighteen months since we last stood before you, we have grown our total assets by three hundred and seventy percent, from a combined total of just sixteen thousand dollars at the end of two thousand and eleven to a total of nearly sixty thousand dollars at the end of July, two thousand and thirteen. In addition to these assets, the assets we currently hold, we have distributed over thirteen thousand dollars in grant awards in just two grant cycles for projects such as classroom iPads, science field kits, technology hardware and software, a greenhouse, musical instruments, art supplies, reading and literacy programs, professional development classes, and environmental studies project. We facilitated the donation of over twenty-two thousand dollars to programs such as Winning Choices, Coast, and the Southwest Virginia Governor's School. And we secured a commitment for one hundred thousand dollars to be donated to the Southwest Virginia Governor's School over the next ten years. MCPS has recently received the first ten thousand dollar donation. How have we achieved this success? Through modern technology and old-fashioned volunteerism. We've taken advantage of the many media outlets you see up here available today, including Facebook, Twitter, and the Internet. What you see here is our Facebook page. We had over three hundred likes as of Friday. Down here is our website. These are all managed by volunteers. Our website shown here was created and is maintained at no charge by a locally-owned and operated Blacksburg company, Uncorked Communications. We advertise our special events and fundraisers through the Roanoke Times and places such as the Lyric Theater, but we also spend many volunteer hours posting signs and distributing flyers throughout the county. We are an all-volunteer organization that partners with local businesses and civic organizations to support our mission. This is the short list of our major sponsors and donors. The long list includes elected officials, MCPS employees, local businesses, civic organizations, individuals, and of course, our board members, and they can all be found on our website. Our first fundraiser and countywide project was held in February and was sponsored by the National Bank and the Virginia Tech Department of Music and Theater. It included a school-wide poetry contest with four age categories and prizes totaling over seventeen hundred dollars. Top prize in each category was an iPad Mini. Winners were announced at our benefit concert, which featured MCPS student groups, a Virginia Tech wood quintet, and headliners Rob Chafin and Erica Sykes. Mr. Chafin is a world-renowned tenor and a graduate of Christiansburg High School. We will be hosting a school-wide art exhibition and silent auction on October nineteenth at the Adam O. Winery in Christiansburg. The exhibition will include a piece from every school in the county. Celebrated artists and MCPS teachers Jessie Pace Berkeley and Jane Lillian Vance are donating pieces for a silent auction, as is BHS graduate Leila Karan, who is currently studying at the School of the Art Institute of Chicago. Tickets are currently on sale for the event. It is through these fundraisers and over sixty-four thousand dollars in donations in just the past eighteen months that we were able to fund the projects you see here. Last Thursday, at the countywide all-staff meeting, we announced our Fall Two Thousand and Thirteen Grant Cycle, where we expect to award between sixty-four hundred to ten thousand dollars in grant distributions. The grant application is available on our website and is included in your packet tonight. Through the generosity of our donors and sponsors, the efforts of our volunteers, and the continued support of the school board, we plan to conduct two grant cycles each year so we can continue to bring you images like these. I'll be glad to take any questions, and thank you for your time.
Board members, questions?
One question. The hundred thousand dollars that goes to the Southwest Virginia Governor's School goes to Montgomery County?
Yes, it does.
Students.
To cover.
Specifically.
Yes. Well, it comes, it covers your part of students that you support that go to the Governor's School.
Right.
So the check is written to MCPS.
Right.
And I just want to thank you all for all the energy and effort. I know it's been not easy. It's been incredible commitment on each one of your parts, and I really am very deeply grateful for our students, our faculty, our staff, for whom this is part of the future financially. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Very much.
When we first started this, we had the bag, the big hairy audacious goal. We're close.
We're getting there.
Close, yeah.
Yeah, we're on our way. Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you Connie.
Amen.
Next item this evening is continuous improvement, professional development plan, increasing student engagement. And I shared with you in the retreat a little bit about what we're going to be doing with academic focus this year, and we kicked off our year with an in-service that was very well-attended by all of our high school staff from Auburn, from Christiansburg High School and Eastern Montgomery High School, and by our math teachers and our department heads from Auburn High School and Blacksburg High School. And that's just the beginning. We talked a lot during the back-to-school kickoff about engagement. Mr. Ivors joined us and captured the attention of everyone by throwing apples. And fortunately, they were hollow, but anyway, it was a very great gathering to start school year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. And it's my pleasure this evening to ask our new Director of Secondary, Jennifer Weaver, and our Curriculum Supervisor for Mathematics, Jonathan Schultz, if they would come forward and they're going to do your presentation this evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, in your packet, in your board packet, one of the things that we included there for you was a recent article from the spring from Forbes Magazine, as, which we wanted to provide some background information on student engagement, and we thought it was a very poignant and important article. So just some brief background as to why engagement is our focus and why student engagement matters. Some of the background quotes from that article, basically it boils down to, if we don't have the kids' attention, and we don't have the kids wanting to come to school and ready to learn, and that's all kids, of all socioeconomic backgrounds, all races, all readiness levels, if we don't have their attention, we're not going to get the best out of them in terms of their performance. So this is a significant issue for us, and it's an area of focus that allows us to work with all teachers and all kids at all buildings, all parts of the county. So when we look at our, you know, our county's mission and vision statements, student engagement's not new, it's not something that's, you know, a surprise, or, you know, a new buzzword or something that's being talked about in other places. It's something that's been important to us for a while. So, for example, in our, in our vision statement, it clearly indicates that we believe that we need to be working hard to try to actively engage our kids and our teachers, and to try to get them enthusiastic about being there, participating in the learning process. And in addition, we believe that we all need to be getting better. We do all the time. It's never going to be good enough. We always need to work harder till we get every kid doing every, you know, the best that they can. So we're always committed to that continuous improvement model. Superintendent Blackburn, I know, has shared with you at different times throughout the year, over the, I guess, the last six, eight months or so, we've been working hard to develop the county's instructional model, which gives us this language, gives us this common way that we can work with teachers and students and parents and community members and talk about what we know is best practice for instruction, one of the most important pieces to instruction. In particular, in our instructional model, we will be focusing heavily on student engagement, which is a key component. We'll be focusing on the relationships piece in terms of helping make, teachers make sure that they have access and have the opportunity to work with their kids in such a way that every child that comes into every building knows that they have an advocate, knows that they belong, and knows that they have people that are looking out for them. In addition, from the instructional side, we want to make sure that we provide teachers with research-based strategies on how to promote that engagement, because while students don't always come to school bringing it, we know that there is, there is sound research base that says, "We can do certain things in classrooms as teachers and administrators that will get, that'll give us a better chance to raise the student engagement." From a learning standpoint, if you think about what teachers are up against every day in terms of distraction and attention, we've got their, got all these stimulants from the outside world, you know, stimulation coming in, all the things that kids are dealing with, that a lot of times can be more interesting than what we're trying to have them do in the classroom. And what we need to do is get what we want into their working memory, and then we need it to stay there long enough so that it gets into their permanent memory, and that's how we boost their achievement. So if we don't have students' attention, then we can't get into their working memory in the first place. So we can have the best lessons and the best plans, put them in front of our kids, but if we don't have them at the door, if we don't have their interest, and we don't have them feeling like they belong in our classrooms, and they're a part of the community, then we're not going to get what we need done. If we don't keep them engaged, we're not going to make sure that the learning that we want to take place, the content that we want them to learn, stays in their working memory long enough that'll get into their permanent memory. So I'm not going to throw anything at you, as Mr. Ivors did at the opening, but I do, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, I have a brief demonstration to show you, which is sort of a model for this idea of engagement and why it's important to student learning, that we've been sharing with principals, that we'll be sharing with teachers as well. So, I hope that you can hear me from here, but, fine, high-quality teachers in Montgomery County. Great, wonderful instructional strategies is the liquid inside the picture. Great students in Montgomery County. But if we don't have the students' attention and engagement, then we can do this all day long, and nothing we do is going to get it. So, our plan in working with our teachers, we want to give them some instructional strategies that'll help them boost the students' engagement. We boost the students' engagement, then we'll boost our student achievements. That's the focus of the plan. So Jennifer Weaver's going to take us through some of the details of the plan.
So I wanted to share with you exactly what we're going to be doing. We're really focusing on three areas. One's engaging students, because as Jonathan's mentioned, if we can't keep their attention and keep them engaged, the best lesson plan is going to be ineffective. We also want to work with them on instructional time and make sure that they're using every single minute that they have. The block is a long time, and if you haven't very carefully planned how to keep that attention and how to keep that engagement, you'll get what I've heard Ms. Blackburn refer to as fanny fatigue. So we want to make sure that we're using every single minute of that instructional time. And we also want to make sure that teachers are armed with the very best instructional strategies available, so that they're not wondering what to try with students. We want to arm them with an arsenal of really effective strategies for them to use. And another important piece that we're going to be focusing on this year is making sure that we're monitoring our practice. I think that sometimes we send teachers into the classroom and they feel like they're not getting feedback and not getting a lot of good coaching and instruction in terms of what's working for them and what we're seeing, because it's hard for you to pay attention to what you're doing in the classroom when you're engaged with students, so we want to give them that good feedback. We also want to monitor our own practice as instructional supervisors and principals in terms of the professional development that we're giving teachers. We talk a lot about "we," this professional development plan as a "we," and so I wanted you to really know that every single person involved is working hard on this, from Ms. Blackburn giving an opening speech, we had a lot of central office members that attended the training, to principals, assistant principals, instructional supervisors. We spent a lot of time this summer already with instructional supervisors and principals working together to make sure that things are well-planned. Now we're adding on those instructional coaches and all teachers. We are working on a little bit of different stages. So initially, we're starting with the group that Ms. Blackburn mentioned, with Eastern Montgomery High School, Christiansburg High School, and then the math teachers and the department chairs at Blacksburg and Auburn. And then we'll be bringing everyone else on, initially through a book study, and then by second semester, everyone should be incorporated. And then, as I mentioned, a really important piece of this is to monitor how things are working each step of the way. We really, with every activity that we have planned, we've built in how we're going to monitor that, so that it's not the spring and all of a sudden we're saying, "Oh, I don't think we did this well, or this wasn't effective, as effective as we'd like for the teachers." And we really have tried to incorporate all perspectives, and so we have, we'll be doing some student surveys, so that they have an opportunity to weigh in on how engaged they're feeling. Teachers have an opportunity to do self-assessments as well as ongoing reflections with us. We're going to be doing lots of observations. The principals and the instructional supervisors, we're all going to be tried to be in those classrooms often, so that teachers, not for an evaluation standpoint, but really for a coaching and feedback standpoint, so that teachers are getting good feedback from us. And then obviously, the most important thing we're going to be looking at is, is it impacting that classroom behavior? I think we do a lot of professional development, I talk about from an awareness standpoint. Here's another thing to try, another thing you might want to be aware of, and this really is geared to change classroom behavior. We have to have those students engaged right off the bat. And so I wanted to share with you, as Ms. Blackburn mentioned, we already have done one step of the process. We've had our first opening professional development, and we had lots of good comments, so I wanted to just share some of them with you. I think you'll notice some of the words that are mentioned are really some of the words that we're focusing on this year, so I'm glad that it came through in the presentation, trying to use technology, trying to engage students. Some comments on this page related to things that teachers can use in their classrooms tomorrow. Sometimes I think professional development seems very high up to teachers. They don't understand how it's going to apply to what they actually do in the classroom the next day. So you can see from some of their comments, they felt that this was a little bit more relevant to them. And then I just wanted to end with a quote from Jim Knight, that engagement really is essential to everything we do. It's essential to the classroom, as Jonathan mentioned, to get things to working memory, but it really is essential to our students feeling connected and our teachers feeling like they're a part of a community, so that everyone feels welcome. And we know if we have those good relationships, that we have a lot to build on if we're using those instructional strategies.
And so just to kind of extend it a little bit, obviously, the main work that we're doing in terms of intensive work with teachers over the next year involves our high school teachers primarily, but we did want to make, point out some other pieces that are focused on engagement that are happening at different, at different grade levels. So for example, in our new K-5 Science and Social Studies text, this is actually an excerpt from one of the new science texts. Essentially, they are written now to give teachers resources and give them ways to focus specifically on engagement and student interest in almost every lesson. Similarly, in our new math textbooks, which are just rolling out tomorrow with the students for the first time, every lesson has a section focused on motivating kids, engaging the kids, getting some hands-on activities into part of it. So essentially, teachers could be, you know, they have access to resources that they could be using almost on a daily basis to try to focus specifically on getting their kids engaged. In addition, some of the other pieces of the secondary math interventions that we've talked about, including the coaches, the Math One Eighty Program, Reflex Math, and as I mentioned, the Big Ideas Math Series, all of those are essentially, when it boils down to it, the bottom line is trying to help at-risk kids who essentially, who may not have a good relationship with school right now, become re-engaged, and to take all of our kids and raise that engagement level, to just overall boost the student So that is the end of our, of our structured presentation.
Board members, questions?
As usual, yay. How much disengaged do you think, or what could we guess, is due to students not reading at grade level?
It would be hard to say for sure, but I would suspect that it, that is probably a root cause for many kids early on, as especially, we know when they hit that, those transition years from fifth to sixth, and from eighth to ninth, a lot of times, students are behind in reading or in basic math. That can be a key factor to that engagement.
Yeah. Are we bringing that in at all? Is there a way to incorporate that issue of the student not reading at grade level?
Yeah, there are companion products. Math One Eighty is based off success we've had with Read One Eighty in our middle school and high schools, and so all of those things are going strong, but we really felt like math was an area that we didn't have a lot of interventions in place for students who weren't coming into especially high school-ready, that we had things in place to help them. So that's what we focused on.
I understand that, and with the test scores and the demands of the state, the nation, et cetera, but still, I, over my lifetime, I've always felt that a lot of the real issues, the real issue of students not engaged is not reading at the grade level. Thank you.
We are not going to let up our focus on literacy.
Thank you.
I mean, we've done, we've had that focus, we've had literacy teams. If you look at the standard achievement measure, which is the SOL test, you know, we've made great strides in the areas of reading and, you know, continue to perform, you know, very well in those areas.
Well, I understand.
So we definitely will not take our eye off the importance of reading, because in math, if you can't read the problem, you're not going to solve the problem.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Definitely.
Thank you.
But now we need to focus also on the technical skills that are involved in the mathematics piece.
I understand.
And support, you know, helping our teachers find some new and different ways of getting the big ideas across in mathematics with students, and that's kind of the focus at this point, but no give up on reading.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board members, other questions?
Yes. So, I understand the new techniques and technology and the new books and everything, but when you start talking about building relationships, what exactly are you doing to build, to have the teachers be more engaged with the students, particularly cultural issues, you know, that folks don't have a clue about?
The focus of the high school professional development is based on the Marzano book, The Highly Engaged Classroom, and he actually does a great job of laying out some very simple but specific things that teachers can do to help form those relationships, and he sort of breaks it into questions. And one of the most important questions that he helps us work with is, are students interested? Do they think they can do it? And so it really helps teachers build some self-efficacy with students, talking to them about the idea that intelligence is not something that's fixed, it's something that you can gain, and showing them that if they put forth effort and become engaged, that they can be successful. And I think that that's one of the things that really troubles our students that have not experienced success in the past. They need someone to show them that that doesn't have to be the case always, that that's something that can change. And it gives some, like I said, some real specific things in terms of, we've talked about things as simple as calling students by name, meeting them at the door, doing interest inventories to get to know their interest. One of the activities we're going to be working on is tied into the Academic and Career Plan, which is something that the state has mandated that we have to do, but we're going to use it in a very effective way so that we can tie into our students' interests and make sure that those are coming through in the classroom, so that they have choice to tie into things that are important to them, that they do believe in, and then translate those things into academic success, because I think right now, a lot of our students feel like those are two very separate things. So we're going to try and draw them a little bit closer together.
Couple of related things. We will be continuing our diversity initiative this year, and in fact, I think it's next meeting, or meeting in October, that we're going to give you an update on what happened last year with our diversity program, and also talk a little bit about the goals and target areas for this year. and also talk a little bit about the goals and target areas for this year. The other thing is, you know, it's that high expectations piece for every student. And we've really done some work with principals this summer, talking about the school data and looking at the individual child. You cannot, you must attend to every single student in every single class if you expect to have a successful group of adults to run this world for us in the next generation. And if you expect to have the gains in student achievement that we're looking for. And at the kickoff this year, one of the things we did, there was a video clip, a group of kids. It was a commercial video clip, but nonetheless, there were kids of all ages, all races, you know, speaking about, "Do you believe in me? Do you believe that I can?" You know, and I think that it was, you know, that was another way that we're trying to focus on the fact with teachers that, you know, it is an individual thing that you do with every single student. Teaching has group activities, but it's very individual. And we know that kids will not learn unless we have high expectations. And so we have continued to focus on that. And an initiative that we've been doing for several years now, at least for three, is having those individual conferences with the parent and student of every child who struggled in the previous year based on the academic performance indicators that we had.
Anybody else?
Yes. Textbooks. I didn't hear much about devices.
Well, actually, as we did the training last Thursday with the middle school teachers, this, of the textbook series that we've adopted in the past three, you know, we've kind of done a rolling cycle of elementary and secondary and middle school. We have dynamite access to those through online resources. So everything is out there and available for students and parents. So as we, you know, if we move forward looking at, you know, device options, we'll be ready to go with this particular product.
What does that mean, as we look forward?
Well, because...
You're waiting for us?
Well, the devices don't come with the textbooks. But they're ready to, the textbooks are ready to be used on the devices.
Put us on the hook. We're okay. Thank you. Secondly, engagement. Probably ninety to a hundred percent of your discipline problems disappear through engagement. I remember Ron Zirkel, a math teacher, an eighth grade math teacher. I was in his building for seven years, and I never saw a student once sent to the office from his room. And when I went into his room to observe, he was never sitting down. He was always walking the aisles, engaging. Engaging and looking. And it was amazing, absolutely amazing. And I think that's where you're headed?
Absolutely.
Good, good.
I have one question about engagement over the summer. And I realize that the funding isn't there much for summer help with kids. But once they get that letter in the mail in June or middle June that possibly they failed the math SOL, what information came along with that or follow-up? Was there any for those three months that they were possibly at home with that news?
That is one of the important functions that the meeting Ms. Blackburn was talking about serves. The principal goes through options with parents or students at the high school level if it's appropriate in terms of intervention services, programs that we'll have for them for next year, that a lot of these things that we were discussing and how those will be used to get kids caught up. So that is an important role that meeting serves.
And that occurs, though, like this month, right?
They worked on it all summer. So yeah, a lot of them started early.
Is it just at the high school?
No, that's all students.
Okay, thanks.
I have a couple of questions. Anybody else? As I read through the presentation, I was actually looking for a definition of what an engaged student looks like. Can you describe what an engaged student would look like in your vision?
Definitely, but I think it might even be easier to describe what a disengaged student looks like. And I think Joe just described it very well.
I had a fifty-fifty shot asking the question.
But honestly, I think it's very easy. I mean, there's that spark in the eyes, they're excited, they are asking questions. They're not sitting passively, they're not... Superintendent Blackburn used a clip from Charlie Brown in the opening ceremony of the wah-wah-wah-wah, and the kids falling asleep at the table. That's not happening. A lot of times, it's just the level of energy in the room. It's the attitude that the students have towards the work. The, when faced with new and challenging problems, they're ready to go. They're ready to tackle tough things because they trust that the teacher has gotten them to the point where they believe that they can do it.
Okay. Next thing is, when we talk about who the "we" is, to me, one of the missing, most important parts of this is the parents. And that's not in the slide, and that bothers me because all the good work that you do, okay, can be somewhat disassembled once they leave the school, if we're not careful. So, you know, you can engage the student all you want, but if we're not also trying to engage the members of the family and bring them up with the student, it's kind of, the self-motivation hopefully comes from the student, but I just would like to make sure that we're reaching out. And I think Ms. Blackburn mentioned parents here a couple. And I've heard you mention parents, but it's not written down, okay?
Well, and just to clarify, what we're focusing on is what the research says. And while we don't always control what parents do and we can't control what kids do outside, we control enough. And we can impact that engagement very positively during the school day. So we certainly want to continue all of the good parent and community outreach pieces and parent engagement pieces that go with, you know, that are in place in our schools as already.
And then my last thing is, my challenge to you is, don't let engagement become a buzzword in education. Because that's what it can happen to it very easily if we don't work at it. Thank you. Any other further questions?
That was nice.
No, I appreciate it. I'm excited about reaching out and engaging students. I just still have some concerns as to with our minority students and our impoverished students, how that actually is going to happen unless we're making sure we're doing the professional development to help folks understand what those children's lives are about. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Jonathan, we appreciate it.
Thank you, folks.
Our next item is a very preliminary school readiness report. And Dr. Graham and Ms. Weaver are going to update us on elementary and secondary. And please keep in mind that all of the data that you see is preliminary because until the kids show up and sit in the seats, we don't really know what we have. But we can speculate. So glad to have you share what we know at this point, or what we think we know.
Good evening. We are excited to be here and we think we're ready to start school. And we better be ready, as Joe said, they're coming, whether we're ready or not. But we think we're ready. Many of the schools have been holding back-to-school nights. And as a matter of fact, Kips has theirs tonight. So I think everybody's excited about the children coming back. The teachers are in place. And from this slide, you'll see that in the elementary world, we think that we're about a hundred students greater this year than we were last year. Until students actually come and sit in the seats, we don't know that yet. Which means our PTR will raise just a little bit, about a half a percent, if that comes to fruition. But we think we're ready. We think we have every student accounted for that we can. Teacher's in place. We do have a new principal at Bellevue, Tara Grant, and a new assistant principal at Falling Branch Elementary, which is Lynn Jacobin.
We're also ready at the secondary level. We're very excited to get going. These numbers are preliminary. I'll have better numbers for you next time. But we do anticipate an increase also at the secondary level. And you'll notice that our PTR went up a little bit as well. That reduction in teachers is based primarily on the changes to our middle school schedule. But everyone's very excited going forward, especially at the middle school. They feel like they worked really hard with the faculties to come up with a good schedule, and they're excited to put it into place.
We thought we would just tell you a little bit of what the focus is in curriculum and instruction this year. And the first one you just heard about was just the instructional model. We are very excited to have that division-wide focus and to encourage all students, all schools, to look at that engagement piece and to look at the whole instructional model.
You also already heard this evening about most of our math initiatives. But we are very excited. I think in the past, sometimes we felt a little bit frustrated with what we had in place to support teachers and students. And I think that we all feel really good starting the year with between coaches, instructional technology, resources, textbooks. We feel like we've done absolutely everything we could to prepare and set our students and our teachers up for success in math.
And we have to always go back and look at reading. Reading is the critical component. Yes, every child needs to read on grade level, at each grade level. So we don't want to forget that focus. We feel like we have made tremendous gains in that area. So we're continuing with our writing program. We're continuing with our reading programs, with the instructional coaches, with level literacy intervention, with Read 180. All those things that we've had in place, we want to continue and strengthen.
And as I mentioned, one of the things we're going to be focusing on this year is making sure that our middle school schedule is as impactful as it can be and that it's increasing student achievement. So that's something we'll be watching closely.
We've spoken to the board several times about Advanced Ed. November the tenth through thirteenth is when they will come to look at our district for accreditation again. So we actually met today, and each school is working on their continuous improvement plan as well as the district level is reviewing and preparing for that visit.
Trackbook is a tool that we're very excited to use this year. I think that one of the challenges for our principals and for our teachers is to have the data that they need, when they need it, without having to look in five or six or seven different places. And that really is what Trackbook is going to allow us to do, to warehouse all of our data in one place so that when I want to see a student's attendance and grades and SOL scores and benchmark scores, it's all in one place. So we're really excited for how easy that's going to make it for us to monitor students that are receiving intervention and that need support.
If you will recall, last year, we had the new teacher evaluation system, which gives us a way to give teachers feedback, both positive, we hope, at all times, but direct feedback on their goals. So this year, we have new principal evaluations, which will require that principals write goals for themselves and for their schools and that will be tied to student performance. So we hope that'll be a very positive way to provide feedback.
You might have heard that we have two new schools opening. So I just wanted to give you some recent pictures and let you know that things are going very well and are very much in place. I heard Mr. Ivors say that he was at Blacksburg High School watching people. I had the pleasure of being at orientation a few nights ago. And everyone was very excited. They're beautiful buildings, they're absolutely ready for our students. And I can't wait for them to have their first day there. Things will go very well.
Board members, questions?
At the next meeting or in the future, will we have the details for each school and the amount to each school with the ratios?
Each year, we bring you a very detailed enrollment. I should have said, when we have that meeting, we usually use the ten-day enrollment. And our next meeting will actually be the tenth day.
Couple things. At Blacksburg High School, I was there a couple of times when they had the orientation. And I was there this morning when they had kids picking up their schedules and following their schedules. And parents were at both. And parents are so thankful, I want this for the whole board, for what we've done to get that school in place. And I'm sure the same thing is true about Auburn, but I wasn't there. But the Blacksburg parents were just thrilled, excited. I never saw so many happy faces in all my life. It was really nice. That's number one. Speaking of happy faces, Mark, Nelson, and Walt are gone, and I love them dearly. But John, Joe, Jennifer, and Lois, there just seems to be a different glow about this. These presentations, I thought, were really, really good, very good. And you just seem to add some excitement to what's going on. And I'm really excited about it. And I know if I'm excited, the teachers must be thrilled. And it's going to rub off onto the parents, and I think you're doing a great job. And I want to thank you. And John and Joe, too, thank you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you all.
I'll just add to Mr. Ivors' comments. You know, folks always say it's not the buildings that do it. Well, I'm going to tell you what. When folks walk into these beautiful new buildings that have been provided, it makes a difference. It does. So the money that the citizens of Montgomery County have put into the school system as far as facilities for the last couple of decades, or last decade at least, it pays off big time. So we appreciate all the hard work that all the people do in the buildings, but the buildings do make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lois. Thanks, Jennifer. We appreciate the update. We know we'll hear more. So our next item this evening is requests for funds from the Board of Supervisors. And the information in this item was shared with you at your last meeting. And tonight, it's presented for your consideration for approval. There have been no changes to the item since you saw it last.
I move for approval.
Second?
We have a motion and second. Is it now open for discussion? Well, since I wasn't at the last meeting, I want to go on record. And I spoke with the superintendent today. One of the things I would like to see restored at some point in time is a full-time fine arts supervisor position. That was one of the positions that was cut. We talk about supporting the arts and the fine arts and how critically important they are in the overall student's development. And if we can restore some of the other positions, we can restore the fine arts. And I know that we don't like to use carryover money to restore the arts. But hopefully, we would be able to fund that money in the budget coming over. You know, while I understand we need to have some in-school suspension assistance that's addressing, maybe if they had the arts and were fully engaged in the arts, they might not be an in-school suspension.
Exactly.
Okay?
Exactly.
And so I think sometimes we're spending the money on the back end and not necessarily on the front end of doing it. So I just wanted to state that I think at some point in time when we have the funds, that to me is a priority, that we reinstate that position full-time. And we also have the same situation with the gifted. And I don't want to slight anybody that's involved in the gifted program when I say something about fine arts. But for me, that, and it's very close and dear to my education as I was growing up. And we see it, we see it.
Yes.
And when we go to conferences, we see the amazing talent that's out there related to the arts. And I think we have a lot of work and a lot of room to do to raise our level in the fine arts. Other than that, I'm happy to see some money for the Christiansburg Stan feasibility study in here.
Yeah, I would like to amend to what you said about the fine arts.
Yeah, I agree also, but I would also include gifted. And I think this is good, right, what we have. But I think our focus, as budget season comes up, which to me starts right away, is both fine arts full-time and gifted full-time. I think that, I think you're right. I think those two are priorities. We, I think our high schools went through a horrendous year last year, when we took away the athletic directors and made it assistant principal slash athletic director. That turned out to be probably a pretty bad situation because what we did is we lost the assistant principal pretty much the whole day because they were doing so much work on the athletic director-type stuff. And I want to make sure we don't make those mistakes again. And I don't see how we can put a fine arts person in a classroom half a day and a gifted person in a classroom half day and have them be effective the rest of the day trying to do what pretty much is a full-time job.
I agree. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And since this is carryover related to funds and budget, I will ask for a roll call on this.
Ms. Albritton?
Hi.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Motion carries.
Just as an aside related to this, I think it's going to be very important that we become politically engaged with those who make the decisions regarding school funding very early this year. The initial reports that I hear are not encouraging.
The initial reports that I hear are not encouraging, and neither are the words from the candidates at this point. And so I would certainly encourage everyone, uh, to stay very engaged with that particular issue, because we need to impact the decisions that are gonna be made about school funding. When the state ends up with a six-hundred-million-dollar, um, surplus, and there's not one single penny in the spending plan designated for K-12, then there's something very wrong. And so I would want to put that on everyone's radar from the beginning, because we are in a catch, playing catch-up at best. And for everything that we reinstate, we look at the potential that we'll have to take it back again the following year, because, uh, that's the kind of budget year that people are talking about for thirteen, fourteen, uh, coming up to planning the fourteen, fifteen budget. So I will do that, and I know we're gonna have at least one person who will be at a meeting tomorrow hearing what one of the potential gubernatorial candidates, uh, has to say on some very important issues. Next, um, item is policy seven dash two-point-two admissions. And, uh, just to give you a little background on this one, um, at your last meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about out-of-county transfers. And, um, there was not agreement among board members how to handle out-of-county tuition transfers. And so following that discussion, I have brought back two options for your consideration this evening, as we do have the full board present. One of the things I did was to take a look at the policies of some surrounding school divisions. And the option A policy is essentially the policy that you have right now. And it is, uh, very similar to the policy that I found for Salem, for Roanoke City, for Roanoke County, for, uh, other schools in our region. If you choose to continue that policy, I have suggested one revision, which is a very clear and definitive statement that all approvals for out-of-county tuition students are one-year only. And I recommend that simply because of the fact that it allows you maximum flexibility. If you have student enrollment, to say, okay, our priority is serving the students of Montgomery County. And I dealt with a similar policy in another, uh, school division that had that very distinct statement in it. You have the vehicle for doing so in the policy as it's currently written, but it's not been past practice here. It has been past practice that once in, that there is great potential that you will be able to stay all the way through graduation if you want to. So if you don't want to do that, then I brought you option B. And option B essentially takes your policy that you have now, and it converts it to your directive. And basically, your directive to the superintendent and staff for the last several years has been that we do not accept any out-of-county tuition students other than those of employees of Montgomery County, uh, school system, children of employees. So you have an option. You have a policy A in which superintendent and staff administer, um, the decisions on acceptance of out-of-county, uh, students for the board. And then you have option B, which takes your current practice and converts it into your policy.
Board members, it's open for discussion.
Well, do you need a motion before we discuss or not?
Um, well, it depend, yeah, go ahead.
I move that we accept option A, giving the superintendent and the administration jurisdiction.
Just for clarification, um, Ms. Blackburn, did you rec, did you recommend B?
I recommend A.
A, okay.
Look, need a second?
No, just so I'm clear, because.
Can we get a second so we can go into discussion? Huh?
You got a second?
Second, okay, now let's go into discussion.
Okay, 'cause I seem to have gotten just the reverse of what you've saying. Option A keeps it as it is and just cleans up the language, right?
It adds a sentence that says all approvals are for one-year only, and it keeps the current language.
I must be reading it backwards.
Yeah, 'cause I'm.
'Cause B says that on mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine too.
Well, that's what I thought. Maybe I got emposted backwards.
Yeah, I'm gonna amend my motion to B. That's what I thought too, Jamie.
That, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
'Cause I'm recommending that you keep your current policy and allow the superintendent and staff to administer your policy, as it is currently written.
And that would be B.
Yeah, and that's what I'll make my motion, right.
So are you with, are you withdrawing your motion?
I'm amending it.
No, you have to withdraw.
Okay, withdraw it.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, and.
So Ms. Albritton has withdrew her motion?
I will make a motion that we accept the superintendent's, um, proposal of student, of, um, option B.
Second?
And option B is what we're doing now, only employees, students?
Option B is your policy as it is written in your policy manual. Your directive to staff.
Is option A, okay.
Is A, which is what you've been doing, although it isn't in line with the policy, okay.
And you're recommending option B?
Which is your current policy with the amendment that one-year only.
So you, that was the motion you made, so now I need a second for that. I didn't, oh, I didn't.
Oh, I did, I seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry. So now we're open for discussion.
Okay, just for clarification, um, in such case that someone would come and apply and be accepted by the board or by your staff, um, to what would make that applicable?
How would that decision be made? Well, in a past life, I made some of those decisions. And generally, I looked at the, um, capacity and utilization of the specific building to which the student applied. And, uh, if the building was eighty-five percent or more of utilization, I denied. If the building was less than eighty-five percent, then I considered if the student would, could meet the other criteria of the policy, that they would be admitted. And the eighty-five percent threshold is kind of a safety valve in that it lets you say, okay, you know, let's take New Blacksburg High School. It's opening at fourteen-hundred. Eighty-five percent of that would be about eleven-hundred-and-fifty or so. So you know that you're very close to eighty-five percent. And the fifteen percent margin gives you a safety valve for protecting the capacity of that student to handle your residence in your school division.
Well, I'm gonna take the stand I took, was it two weeks ago? You know, we went round and round with this policy, I guess maybe two years ago, very recently.
It was before I came, so before March two thousand and ten.
Okay, so before March two thousand and ten, we went round and round with this for several meetings and decided what we were going to do. And that was with employees', um, children. These folks don't live in the county. They don't pay into the tax base that supports these schools and the teachers and everything that goes along with it. And every time we have someone who wants something, we're gonna do, change the policies, change the policies, go back and revisit. I don't think we necessarily need to do that every few years. And, uh, so I will not be voting in favor of, you know, changing this. You know, cleaning up the language is fine, but, uh, no. There, there is financial issues that are involved here. And as the superintendent just stated, they're gonna get worse, not better.
So I, I need some help understanding, yeah, certainly based on, uh, Ms. Franklin's comments. Does, which option is like what we're at now but tightens it up?
Okay, you have a directive to the superintendent and staff that is in direct contrast to your policy.
Right.
So although the discussion took place several years ago.
Right.
And you told the superintendent what you wanted to happen.
Right.
Nobody ever addressed the policy. So you have a policy, and people read a policy, and they think they can apply for out-of, uh, county tuition student basis in Montgomery County. And then they call us and we say, yes, we know the policy says that, but our board has directed us not to do that. So if you want to hold all the seats in Montgomery County Public Schools for either residents or non-resident employee children, then option A takes your policy and turns it into your directive, okay?
Option A.
Option A.
My question is, how much tuition are we, are we charging?
Four thousand and seven or eight dollars this year. It's reset every year. It's based on how, what the statute says you can use to set it. It, what it doesn't include is debt service.
Right.
And capital. And so you can't add in any numerical dollar figure to support debt service and capital for a tuition student.
And that's based on our state law?
Yes.
Okay. That's policy, that's the first option?
Option A in your attachment would take your directive.
Right.
Which is not in policy language and turn it into your policy.
'Cause even the motion on the floor right now is changing the policy but not changing the directive.
Which, which means that no students come in regardless.
Option A, no out-of-county, non-resident tuition students would be allowed, except as they're required to be allowed by law. There's some things in there about homeless kids and some things about.
Right.
But just John Q. Public, who lives in a neighboring county and wants to pay tuition and come to Montgomery County Public Schools, cannot do so. That's option A.
But B that we.
And option B is?
The superintendent and staff make the decision on the basis of the, uh, established criteria. And you asked me how I would recommend making the decision, and I, I gave you an example.
Now, I'm, I'm agreeing with Ms. Franklin. I just went through an exercise with a family and all, all of us were involved in it, but it came directly to me, which I think we didn't handle well at all because of, of history. And history indicated that a family did come to the schools, they did pay tuition, regardless of what the extenuating circumstances were, they were allowed to come here. This family wasn't. I found that deplorable. We're either gonna tighten this thing up so that it doesn't squeak at all, or I'm not gonna vote for anything else.
It's my understanding that a family that was allowed to come here in their application indicated that they would be moving into the county, which in fact they did.
Yeah.
And they gave proof of residency of that, and they did that within the timeframe that they were stated. So I'm not sure that was deplorable.
Well, it's still extenuating circumstances. And I, and I still think that we said no, and then we said, well, maybe no. Let's let this family in. So either we're gonna say no, or we're gonna just vote to the win. And this policy A states no. Policy B.
Okay, well, I'm.
You got what you got.
Allows the superintendent and the administration to, to decide. And if we have schools that are not full, I mean, I would rather see some use to that and see what evolves. I'd like to try B and see how our.
His motion on the floor is for policy B?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, oh, okay, 'cause I'm still just real confused. The only thing that I will vote for is a policy that affirms what our directive has been.
Policy A.
That's option A.
Okay, I'm good. I just wanted to make sure.
And that's me, because even though I, I completely agree, if you don't live in the county, you don't pay the taxes, you shouldn't be able to come. If that's what we're gonna do, then it needs to be written in policy. I do, however, think in extenuating circumstances, a student should have the opportunity to finish their high school career. But if we're not gonna, if, if we're not gonna do it, I wanted to say it in the policy because I think there can be mixed signals sent. And we are not in the business to do that.
Well, I.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay. You're withdrawing your.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ivors has withdrew his motion.
Okay, and if you will recall, at the last meeting, the superintendent did clarify that when we gave the directive, we grandfathered in all those students who were here. All of those children have graduated, so we're, we're on a clean slate here.
Then it's time to make some changes. I move that we accept policy A with the changes to it.
Second?
We now have a motion on the table to accept policy A, option A?
Well, I'll have to vote against it.
Oh, policy seven dash two-point-two. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just not welcoming people when we have room in our schools is just incredible to me, and I cannot vote for this motion.
Okay, that's fine.
Cannot.
I think between the two meetings, we've talked it thoroughly, right?
Yes, thoroughly.
Thoroughly, thoroughly talked it.
Yes.
Okay, and since it is policy, I'm going to ask for roll call just because of the debate as well. I don't think there's any further discussion, so at that point, I'm asking for a roll call.
And just to confirm, I have the motion as approved revised policy seven dash two-point-two admissions to allow for out-of-county transfers only for children of Montgomery County School Board employees as designated in option A. Ms. Bond, does that sound accurate to you?
Yes, option A, did you say that?
Yes. Ms. Albritton?
No.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Next, uh, agenda item is policy five dash seven-point-five. Again, this was a policy that generated considerable discussion at the last meeting, and we did not reach agreement. And you asked me to bring back, um, some clarifying information as well as potentially an option that would, um, be a compromise between where we are and where we had recommended that we go. The current policy that you have in place right now for the sick leave bank treats the use of earned leave by employee groups differently. Employees in the sick leave bank are allowed to retain their annual leave and tap into the sick leave bank. Employees who are not in the sick leave bank do not have that option. They have to exhaust all, all leave, including annual leave, before they can go on unpaid leave. The question to the board is, do you want sick leave bank employees to have a benefit that protects their annual leave, knowing that that is not a benefit that you provide to other employees in the school system? Other than that one change that requires school board, sick leave bank employees, like all other employees, to exhaust all leave prior to taking days from the sick leave bank, the policy that is presented to you has no impact on the sick leave bank. It does nothing else to the sick leave bank. I would share with the board that in the future, the new VRS hybrid plan is going to have a significant impact on how we deal with the sick leave bank. Because if you recall some of the discussion about the new hybrid, it, at a certain point in time, you automatically kick into long-term disability or short-term disability. And so the sick leave bank, as you know it, is going to go through some changes, but we're not quite ready to do that. And so the question tonight is, you know, do you want to protect annual leave days, some or all, for your employees who are. for your employees who are in the sick leave bank, at least until such time as we bring you a total revision of the sick leave bank procedure that we have? So I have presented for you three documents. We tried to show you a little chart that shows you the difference. And the bottom line is that if you look in that chart, a non-sick leave bank member would use the twenty days of annual leave that they have before they'd be eligible for other kinds of leave. Then on the other side, the sick leave bank member, who would have, for example, twenty days of annual leave, would not be required to use that leave before accessing the sick leave bank days. So that's one attachment that we gave you. Then we gave you two versions of the policy. Option one brings the treatment of employees who are in the sick leave bank and who are not in the sick leave bank in the area of annual leave into a uniform approach. Option two, switching gears, was my attempt to craft a compromise, which would allow employees in the sick leave bank to retain up to five days of their annual leave before going into the sick leave bank. So you have two options. Option one requires both sick leave bank and non-sick leave bank employees to exhaust all their leave, including annual. The second option provides a cushion and allows sick leave bank members only to retain up to five days of annual leave. My recommendation, if you want one, is that you bring the two employee groups into the same equity in terms of how you deal with the annual leave days, especially knowing that we're gonna have to do a major rewrite of your sick leave bank anyway. And that would be involved with engagement with that sick leave bank committee.
Can I ask, what, what's it require to be a member of the sick leave bank?
You fund it. You fund it.
So you have to just donate a day?
You donate a day. And every time the balance in the sick leave bank goes below a certain number of days, all the employees who are in the sick leave bank get a notice that we're taking a day of your sick leave and putting it into the bank.
I'd like to make a motion that we leave the policy the way it is. I think we're a little bit premature on this, and we need to see what the hybrid situation is gonna be before we get into this. Anyway, that's my motion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for discussion, and I guess my question would be, if I can just real- So when is the hybrid model going to come in?
January, and Joe, I don't know what your timeline is for reconvening and addressing the sick leave bank. But the hybrid policy begins Janu- with hires after January two thousand and fourteen.
Yes, ma'am. All employees hired after January one, two thousand and fourteen, will be on the hybrid plan. So that number will be small at first, but then grow, as you can imagine. So it's just going to affect those employees, though, hired after January one.
And we have much larger pool of employees that this currently impacts now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I guess my question, since we're, have this for discussion, is that if we're trying to bring, and this is really about earned leave, has nothing really to do with the sick bank. This is all about how you, employees are going to retain their earned leave. If you bring the non-sick bank employees in line with the sick bank employees, then what advantage do you have to be in the sick bank? You know?
You're bringing the sick bank employees-
Well, whatever, okay, I said it backwards, but still, what, what's my advantage? What's the benefit of being in the sick bank?
Because you're given a day and you're given a day in a year, and you could get up to, you know, here in this example, there's sixty days that you're gonna get out of the sick bank. So there still is a major advantage to that, and you know, there are a lot of companies that require you to use-
But you have, but the way the policy is written is that you're gonna have to burn all of that. You, you, you're gonna, you're gonna have, you're gonna burn it all, right?
Your annual.
Your earned leave, all kinds of earned leave, you would have to use before you could go to, get to the sick leave bank.
Okay.
Then when all sick leave, when all your leave has been used and you've applied to the sick leave bank for days, then as a sick leave bank member, you have access to up to, what is it, sixty days a year?
I mean, it's sixty days total for your, for your career here. Thirty days are given by HR, approved by HR, and then an additional thirty can be approved by the sick leave bank committee.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the non-sick leave bank committee member would go on unpaid leave. They wouldn't have those sixty days, up to sixty days that they could get.
But they would use all their leave also.
Yes, both categories.
I still don't understand why we have sick leave and not, and I mean, why some choose and some don't, I don't-
Because they have to give a day of leave to be in, and some employees don't wanna do that.
Right.
Well, and some employees may have children that they know their options probably aren't as broad to do so.
So, so I made a motion be- because of the hybrid situation, but then Joe Sip mentions that, that, that only affects new employees.
No, yeah.
So.
Well, you, you probably will have to deal with the issue of, are you gonna have multiple kinds of sick leave banks? I mean, you know, what are you gonna do? You know, can you have one sick leave bank for people who were hired before January one, two thousand and fourteen, and another sick leave bank for after that?
That, that's correct. Ms. Blackburn's right. What, the thing is, is that, and, and Virginia Tech is a good example of that, before ninety-nine and after ninety-nine. They have two separate policies that address those types of situations. In one case, if you're hired after ninety-nine, you're not allowed to use any kind of leave, given leave, or they actually donate leave, is how they do it. And before ninety-nine, you're eligible to use all your banker time and all that, and able to do that as well. So there's two separate policies. So those are some of the decisions that are gonna have to be made in the near future as well.
So my motion to leave it alone until hybrid comes in, would that be something you might recommend, or, or where are you with that?
I recommend that you treat both groups of employees equitably.
Isn't that what we have now?
No. You allow your sick leave bank members to retain all of their annual leave. And they may retain up to tw- two times what they earn in a calendar year. So if an employee earns eighteen days in a calendar year, they could retain up to thirty-six days, whereas a non-sick leave bank member can't retain anything. So I recommend you treat them both the same and not, and require the use of all leave.
But currently, don't our employees make the choice? They're making their choice.
They make a choice about whether to join the sick leave bank or not. But they, the policy has been driving for sick leave bank members that they are able to retain all their annual leave. It's a benefit question. Was your sick leave bank designed to provide the accrual of annual leave as an added benefit? Or was it just something that was overlooked as the policy evolved? Because it is definitely a benefit. If I can get sixty days out of the sick leave bank and hold in my pocket thirty-six days of annual leave while I am getting leave from the other employees of the school division that's paid, fully paid.
Now, let's make sure we're breaking this down the right way.
I totally agree.
Because the sick leave bank is there for folks who are going through catastrophic illnesses, or they're, or they're a family member, so that they'll have time off to take care of themselves or the family member. And that's why employees wanted to create this sick leave bank so they could help their fellow employees by donating their time. They could possibly lose more than just one day that they're donating, depending on what the need is. They could even give up maybe five days a year if there are a lot of illness, illnesses that are going on and people are tapping into it. So it's not like, oh, I'm gonna gain all these days and put them in my pocket and have them. It's because when you do need them, you won't have those days that you donated anyway. You know, so I don't think it's a matter of, you know, this group is getting advantage over the other because this other is giving up also. Now, I do agree, as I said two weeks ago, maybe we do need to look at that and have folks use, retain some of that time, but still have to use some of that. Because what can happen is, once you've used all your accrued time, no matter what it is, and use all of your sick leave, your, your sick bank time, you come back to work and you, you're still not healthy. Or, or the family member is still not healthy. You have to go for doctor's appointments, you have to go for treatments, and you have no time left. You know? And yes, oh, we always work with people, but I've seen incidents where it's like, well, we've worked enough, so we can't work anymore. So the employee is left without a job. So I can compromise with the five days. At least folks have something that they can use if things are still good when they come back and they've used everything that they have. But I just don't think it's right that we just leave a person hanging out there with nothing and then get into a bad situation. So I think our policy should, you know, level things out some, but we should not take all these folks leave away from them because they may need it. I have seen it happen too many times.
So I'm having a bad night. What, what you're saying contradicts what we have in the policy now.
Right.
So I don't know how many times I've done this tonight, but I'm withdrawing my motion again. Is this being televised?
That was your better.
So I, I'll make a motion-
I like that.
That we adopt, is it option or?
Two.
Two.
Second.
Can I ask a question about the chart?
Can we get a second before you ask the question? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's quite all right.
I'm having a bad night, too.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the chart, it says at the bottom, sick leave bank requires an employee to have five unpaid sick days prior to using the sick bank. So can they use annual for those five unpaid days?
No.
No, they have to go on leave without pay for five days before they tap into the sick bank.
That's correct.
And, and, you know, that's kinda in line with what, I have to go seven days before I can tap into any kind of leave.
And can you tap into it if you have annual and stuff? Like, could you, like, the thing I was looking at, I looked at a lot of different company policies, and a lot of companies require employees to go on leave without pay for five days, which it looks like we do, but you must exhaust all your leave before you do that, because you're tapping into a bank. So.
Which is-
Right, which is-
Align with the option A.
Right.
Right. Which I'm saying is, as long as folks have that five-day safety net after they've exhausted everything to still be able to do treatments and appointments, I would like to see it be more than five, but.
Well, they are earning leave while they're out in sick leave bank also.
And, and the, the other thing with earned leave is something that you get to carry over from year to year?
Annual leave, you can carry over up to two years of annual, of earned annual leave. So depending on whether you earn a day a month or day and a half a month, it would be anywhere between twenty-four and thirty-six days.
So the maximum you have at any given ti- a maximum an employee has regardless of their tenure at any given time is thirty-six days of annual leave?
Carryover, yes.
Carryover. But they could have, if I've been an employee for fifteen years, I could have a significant amount of annual leave, correct?
Because you can only-
Only thirty-six days.
Oh, no, thirty-six days are allowed for carryover. You can have a balance that's higher, but your carryover from one year to the next can be a max of twice your, what you're allotted per year.
Okay.
So if you're allotted twelve days per year, you get twenty-four. Now, you can have more than twenty-four because you could end the year with thirty-six days. If you did that, the max that would carry over is twenty-four. You would lose twelve days. And we've had employees this year lose eighteen days of annual leave. Because they, they reached their max at the end of the year and they didn't use enough days.
So they didn't use enough of their days during the year?
That's correct.
So they lost them at the end of the year.
That is correct.
But those other eighteen rolled over.
Those thirty-six were rolled over.
Thirty, thirty-six rolled over to the accumulated balance they already had.
That's correct.
So.
But, but if you decide to leave the district, you can't just take all of that?
No, I understand that. I'm, I'm trying to think back to the catastrophic illness type situation where they may be out for weeks for surgery, and they've got the leave to be able to, they may have enough leave to be out for six weeks, right?
Well, sick leave is different than annual leave.
That's correct.
Sick leave accrues differently than annual.
Sick leave, you can carry as much as you don't use.
Sick leave, you accrue one day per month for the amount of months that you're employed.
Yeah.
There is no cap on sick leave.
On accrual.
Right, on accrual. Yes, there is on payout, but not on accrual.
Right.
I don't know what the max is here. The max I've seen, though, in, in any school division is like two hundred and fifty days.
So in the last year, do we know how many days the sick bank members have had to donate in the last year, school year?
Last time we donated was February of two thousand and twelve.
Okay, so the regular members for the last school year gave one day?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We are going to have to do it again this year. The sick leave bank balance right now is four hundred and fifty days, four hundred and fifty-six days. And we just approved ninety days at our sick leave bank committee meeting. So it'll be under, under four hundred here, so we're gonna have to accrue a- again, get, get a day from everybody.
And do we know how many everybody is?
Yes, sir. We have eleven hundred and twenty-six employees now that are members. And we just employed seventy-one teachers total, so we could have over twelve hundred days that could be donated if everybody returns.
So it's a, it's a-
You, you're telling me that we have eleven twenty-six members in the sick leave bank?
That is correct.
Well, then who's not in it?
We have, we have a significant amount.
Really?
Well, we have close to two thousand employees.
Well, that's right. I'm just thinking teachers, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's for everyone. I was thinking the number was low because of-
We have good participation.
Yeah, I don't blame them.
And they choose every year, so they can choose not to be in it this year or, and to be in it next year and-
Yes, ma'am. What we'll do is we send out a, a, a notice letting them know that we're going to have to do this again to take a day from them. If they wanna opt out, then they opt out at that time. If they don't opt out, then we automatically roll them over.
So they stay in until you ask for leave, and then they have an option to go out at that point?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that not seem a little strange to others?
Well, at that point, they're, we're asking them for a day.
Right, but I mean, to me, it would be a choice that you make the beginning of every school year, whether or not you're in it. And then if it needs to come out, it comes out.
For, for new employees, we do, we do that. They have to opt in right away. But those existing employees, we don't always do it at the beginning of the school year. And some years, we don't have to take the day. So they're automatically rolled over to the next year.
It's not affecting them at all until you have a day.
Right, but that just seems strange to me. You're either in it or you're not.
It's like I'm in it till I have to sacrifice, and then I'm not in it anymore.
Right, exactly.
I mean, right, that's not right. It's not right.
Right, but, you know, I understand what you're saying, but if you opt out of it, then we're back to the superintendent scenario. You're back into a group whom, you know, you take your chances on what happens, right?
Right, I hear you.
You know, I remember the discussion and folks speaking about this when the sick bank, sick leave bank, you know, was bought in. And folks were talking about employees, their family members, you know, people they work with, who needed extra time. On my job, we're not allowed to give people vacation if they need it to help with illnesses and things like that. And I just think that's wrong, because I would be one of the first ones to say, okay, I'll, I'll give up a day, right? Right? And this is what our folks are doing for each other, they're giving up a day, maybe two days, depending on what the need is. And now we're going back and saying, oh, sorry for being nice, being concerned about your coworkers, um, we're gonna have to take some of that back. And I do understand by how this is broken down, and it may have been an oversight at the time, that things were kinda really, you know, out of balance. So, I can understand bringing it back in, but not taking all those days. I'm just telling you folks, I've seen-
Not taking all of the leave days?
Not taking all those leave days.
Okay. I know we went lengthy here, but I, I have a couple of questions, I mean, in, bear with me, board members, but when you have situations where you have employees who may have a chronic condition that, in which they've exhausted all of their annual leave, and they've exhausted all of their sick bank, you know, what do they do? What, what's, what, what happens when all the options of leave and they still need additional help? They, someone says that they need help and they don't have it. What options are available to the employees then?
They're, 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 they're limited, I mean, we, we have to dock people after they've exhausted all those days, and there's no more leave to give. Um, we, we, we would have to start docking them.
But they would have access to family medical leave?
That is correct, that was my, my next point.
Although it would be unpaid leave.
Right, and FMLA does not stipulate that we have to pay the time that they're out.
Right.
Right, but they would be on, if they are in a case where it's intermittent FMLA, and we do have cases like that, then, once they've exhausted those times, then, then they would be docked.
Now, if they're under workman's compensation, are they still docked?
No, that's, that's, that's a different, that's, that's a different scenario altogether, workman's comp and, and FMLA, um, although they can run concurrently, they, they, they're treated separately, because they're gonna be paid by the workman's comp.
Only for three years.
Okay, right.
If it runs, if it run, it, it does run out, okay?
Yes, sir.
We know that it runs out, I know that it runs out. And, again, that's what I'm talking about from a chronic illness standpoint that is documented, that if after the workman's compensation statute is exhausted, then what options do the employees have after that, if it's under workman's comp?
Yes, sir. They are not docked time if they're out for a workman's comp-related issue. If they take time to go to the doctor because of a workman's comp-related issue, they are not docked time for that.
But should they go to the doctor, the doctor says that you need additional surgery and you're gonna be out X number of days, and you've already exhausted your time and your leave from previous, uh, surgeries, then, and you're, have, don't have the backing of workman's comp, what happens then?
Again, we would have to, we would have to look at that situation, and more than likely, that person would be docked if they've exhausted all other leave. And, and it's not a workman's comp-related issue.
Well, it is.
If they're, after that-
If the injury occurred on, during, it's been classified as workman's comp-
Right.
That injury, it does, in my opinion. But I'm just, I'm trying to play the thing all the way out, cause we have situations like this, and I've heard of situations like this.
Well, one of the things with workman's comp, if you are, um, given an award of lifetime medical and lifetime whatever to cover the injury, then you just have to make sure you know what you're doing with the system to make sure you are covered even when that time runs out.
My experience is different. Okay. We have a motion on the table? Will you recite the motions and settle the discussion?
Approve the changes to policy five dash seven point five as shown in option two, stating that members of the sick leave bank may retain no more than five days of annual leave before utilizing the sick leave bank.
Okay, any further discussion?
Now, considering that the superintendent was trying to align the two policies, um, do we wanna add something in there that would say that the other employees that are not in the sick bank could retain five? Is your recommendation no? Okay, just making sure.
Again, since it's policy, I'm gonna ask for roll call on this, please.
Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Uh, no.
Ms. Woolsey?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is, uh, procedures for community groups to address the school board. Based on the discussion at the August sixth school board meeting regarding community presentations, um, staff conducted some additional research and have shown you that policy one six point two addresses how the agenda is prepared for each board meeting, and policy one dash six point eight addresses citizens groups who wish to present to the board. Both policies are provided for your information and discussion this evening.
This is related to the fact that we in the past have said that if people who wish to address the board have the opportunity to do that under public address, and in the past, this board has said, uh, if, when community groups or employee groups or some have asked for, to be placed on the agenda, they've been told, well, they have three minutes under public address to do that. And that's been my experience, and I'm, this is, uh, if we have changed as a board our philosophy, I just want direction, and I think the staff wants direction on how, when community groups say they'd like to address the board and give us information on different initiatives that are going on out there in the community related to how they're supporting the school system, what we need to say, because I've been telling them that they have the opportunity to speak at public address, but not be placed on the agenda.
How many requests do you get for this kind of thing as the chairman?
Uh, that, you need to defer that to the superintendent.
I've only-
They don't request them to me.
Yeah. This year, I've had two requests, okay? Last year, I think one, or maybe not, maybe none last year and one the year before.
These are community, uh, groups?
No. Two of the three requests that I remember are from a community group, the Community Montgomery County Education Foundation, and the other was from a group of, uh, employees who wanted to speak, uh, regarding a issue that the board was debating. And it was an action item, information and action item for the board. And in that instance, they were directed back to public discussion, because it was about your business, not about sharing information, or telling you about a group or a foundation, or something like that. Otherwise, you could possibly have, you know, multiple presentations about every single thing that you deal with as a business item, and so that was the way I made that decision.
And even as community groups, we may not have folks who are requesting that now, but if we open it up to that, I guarantee you, because I have several that I would have come before this board on a regular basis, talking to you about things that they're doing in the community and how that affects public education, or does not, because it's just, we can come and talk to you. I wanna be on your agenda.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I think this all came out because of the educational foundation. And to me, it's a little bit different, because the educational foundation, you know, their mission pretty much states they're here to support our school system. So, to me, I don't know of any other group, local or wherever, um, that's there and it's part of their mission statement to support our schools. So, to me, this is a little bit different than a community group that's trying to come and speak to us.
Well, there are many community groups that support our school system.
That's right.
I don't think there's many that-
That's not their main goal, but-
No, right, I agree with you, Dreama.
Well, there's two.
I think a lot of them, it's their main goal, that's the reason they exist.
Right.
To support our school system and to support the school center.
To support the community, which-
I disagree, I see it.
Yeah.
I don't see it any different.
Well, there-
Let me finish.
Could you name a couple of those?
We have many groups out there that are supporting our school system.
Like what?
And supporting the schools and doing the things in the school district that, that help the students. It may be school-specific, it may be school-based, but I don't see this any different. Okay. And I'm looking for direction, that's all I'm doing, because over the past X number of years we've been here, been doing this, I have been told when I've asked, and I've had people come to me and say, can we present to the board? And I've said, no, you normally don't get an agenda item. Um, we've turned down our, even our employee groups and different employee groups that have asked to come and present to the board. And they've skillfully used the three minutes to be able to do that. I, I have no problem listening to, to what the community groups want to say to us if they want to report to us, uh, not against that, I just seek clar- clarification on what I need to tell people when they ask. And I don't place any, I, I don't place rank, I don't place importance, because I think every group that's out there supporting Montgomery County School Division in whatever small way that they're doing that, is all on an equal basis.
Didn't you just say that you, generally if someone came to you, you'd suggest they talk to the superintendent? No?
No, I-
Yeah, well, there's a conflict there, you, you indicated that we should talk to superintendent about who has come to us the last couple of years, and that you just indicated that they come to you also. Well, we wanna know who they were and how many, but we didn't have the numbers.
I don't think any of those groups have school board appointees on them. This group is like, Ms. Foster expressed-
Exactly.
Has the superintendent and a school member on it, it's totally different than what you're talking about.
I agree.
There, there's no, there's no other group out there that indicates that, um, um, what the foundation says in its mission statement. Um, there may be groups that are supportive of education, such as the Chamber of Commerce, but the Chamber of Commerce's main goal is not helping the school system, that's not their main goal. And if you have other groups out there that their main goal is to help the school system, I don't know who they are, but I do know that the Montgomery County Educational Foundation, that's their main goal.
Exactly.
That's number one. Number two, um, we also have a webpage that's on Montgomery County Public Schools. We're part of a webpage, and no other group has that. We have board members, we have teachers, we have administrators. It's made up predominantly to assist, enhance Montgomery County Public Schools.
Right.
No other group does that. I, um, over the, the last four or five days, I called about twenty different foundations to see how they work with their school board, and, um, it's the same way. I said, how many times you report, make reports to your board? And they said, well, we usually do it about twice a year. I said, is that part of the agenda? They says, yeah, it is. Um, and I, I don't understand where this comes in, that we're a community organization, we're part of the school system.
You know, when the foundation was being revitalized, it was made clear several times, this is a separate entity than Montgomery County Public Schools, it is not a part of Montgomery County Schools.
No, that's not true.
And, oh, yes, it is, because that's what the statement said.
It's not part of the school board.
Very clear, very clear, that it's not a part of Montgomery County Schools. And just like other organizations, we have, we have committee folks, uh, board members who are part of those committees, and those, if there is information that needs to be shared, and the biggest one that comes to mind and the most frequent one is the governor's school. And you and Mr. Joan, Jones is representative of that, have reported out on what's going on with those, but you haven't made public, uh, presentations to the school board about those, uh, about the governor's school. So, I see, I see there is a big difference, and I see all of a sudden now the educational foundation is becoming a part of Montgomery County Public Schools, just because we have people from the school district who serve on the board. And I don't think that's right, because it was stated in the beginning, this is not a part. Now, all of a sudden, it is a part, you know? I appreciate the work, glad to see that it's happening, but to hold this above everybody else, when we have been doing it in a way that people who are on committees, I have reported on Christiansburg Institute when I sat on that board from this seat, not from up there, because that was my committee assignment, you know? So, I do see that there is, there is a conflict here. And now, all of a sudden, it's just a part of the school district, so, you know, we get special privileges. And I don't think that's right, you know, so I just don't.
In other words, you're suggesting that as a member of the school board who also sits on the foundation board, that member could just report back to us around the table?
Yes, and that's the way those committee assignments have been dealt with in the past.
Well, unfortunately, what you're saying is not true, we did not ever say that we were going to be part, not part of the school system. What we said was we were not going to be under the purview of the school board, and that was quite clear from the get-go, I remember stating that quite clearly.
Well, only you understood that.
We were, we've always, excuse me, we've, we've always been part of Montgomery County Public Schools to the fact that we're on the webpage. And I don't, I don't understand what the conflict is, because the misunderstanding, I can understand, but we have not been under the purview of the school board.
And I remember you asking to be on the webpage so that you could help get the information out about the foundation, not so that you could be a part of Montgomery County Schools. That was the discussion when you asked to be put on the webpage.
Which, if I remember that discussion correctly, we said that, that's fine, but I think I stated a concern that if other organizations, groups want to be on the webpage, what do we say to them? Because I, I disagree with the concept that just because it's in your mission, that you're not supporting the school system. I mean, we have tons of people who are working in PTAs and PTOs who are working their butts off in support of the school system, and if one of those groups would like to come before this board to present what they're doing, then based on what I've heard, I have no problem hearing what that group is doing, and based on with significant budgets, I mean, these, some of these PTAs and PTOs have significant budgets that they're working with. There's other groups that are out there supporting kids and supporting what's going on with the school system, so, you know, I, I'm confused.
I believe this is a unique, you know, foundation, in that it is county-wide. What you're talking about is very specific school devised groups.
Oh?
This is unique.
I mean, to me, whether you support kids in one strand or the entire county, you're contributing to the overall division. Okay?
What, what's the procedure, um, is this just for discussion, or exactly what are we doing here?
It was placed on your agenda as a discussion item for the board to have an opportunity to talk about how you would like to handle this in the future. You do have the opportunity also to use board member reports. And that's what Ms. Franklin was talking about with the governor's school and other. I mean, any board member who has a report, you know, Sarah could come and go to the podium, podium and have a member of MCEF with her and provide a report about what's going on with the foundation. Uh, your governor's school, you could go to the podium and do under board member reports an update on the governor's school and, you know, the other committees that you serve on. So, you do have an avenue to do it there. But the question is, do you want to have groups such as Montgomery County Foundation and/or other groups to be able to make presentations directly to the board in the superintendent's agenda, which is where this one was placed?
So, to clear this matter up, if Connie Froggett were to come up to the podium with Sarah,
Right.
the presentation would have taken a different form, but presented the same way?
It's under board member report.
I believe you might have done it under board member reports the first time that you and Susan did the report. As I remember, I'm trying to, to reflect on what we did then, but I think maybe it was under board member reports. So, even if you don't wanna have presentations, you do have a, a venue for being able to provide a little more in-depth information about a group that you are specifically charged by the board to be a representative for this board.
Well, and I don't think it's a disrespectful measure by doing so, I think it's just the fact that what's being said that I'm hearing is, there's all kinds of different groups as far as, like, the PTAs and different things, and I know I get asked all the time, well, could I come and-
And I know I get asked all the time, well, could I come and do a presentation? And we kind of say no, so it's kind of like if you throw it out there, then you've got everybody coming, because everybody wants you to see what they're doing for the schools and for the kids and, you know, baseball programs and football programs and touchdown clubs, and they're all there for the kids. They're all raising money. I mean, I know when I was in Christiansburg Touchdown Club, we raised a hundred thousand a year, and it all went back to the football players, every bit of it. So, you know, I, I think you got to limit what you're, what we do. And I thought that when somebody wanted to hear from an interest group, we brought, somebody brought it up under new business, and then we voted on it, to hear if we wanted to hear from it.
That's one way, yes, that's been done in the past.
Right.
Well, the fact that a representative on our board is on the foundation board wouldn't mean we'd have to vote for it, you'd just be making a rep, a report with an, with a person from the board, like was done tonight, but with her.
That's correct.
Sounds good to me.
I think that works.
Yeah.
But I do think the foundation is a little different than all the other organizations raising money. This is specifically intended for the whole, whole, whole educational system, not one school or another school. It was intended to build and grow money for our school system. And this is the only answer we have right now, people, as we look at the future of our state, as our leaders want to take away our public education. So to me, the sooner we can make this grow for our own kids, our own faculty and staff, um, I think we have to see this as part of our future in a big way, countywide. Um, how we get it reported, if it can be done through the member of the board who's on the board, that's fine with me, as long as we understand that. But this is the future of Montgomery County Education, as far as I can see it.
You know, Phyllis, no one disagrees with what you just said. I mean, I've been saying for years, uh, if we don't reach out to the community to help support public education, we're going to be in trouble.
That's right.
And again, I appreciate the work. I am so happy that it's happening, because it needs to happen.
Thank you.
But we're talking about how we operate as a board.
I understood. And as long as it can happen in this way, where we can have a report?
We said we could.
Fine.
So basically, what I'm hearing from the board is that they are in agreement that we will u- utilize the board member reports for these type of requests?
I'm not going to argue with them.
Okay.
Well, as I'm understanding, we have a process where we can get a report, right, with no time limit?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item.
My final item is the calendar of activities, and it's available for your review and opportunities to participate.
What's happening tomorrow?
It's going to happen early.
Board members, any items of unfinished business by school board members? Hearing none, new items of new business? And I think that we have one is going to be, uh, the BSBA Take Your Legislator to, to School Month, and I think that, as the superintendent alluded to earlier, this will probably be an important, uh, op, a very important opportunity to meet with the candidates and meet with their legislators to talk about the educational issues, and, uh, I believe what we're going to start working on is dates. Is that correct?
We can certainly do that. We've had real difficulty getting significant representation from our delegation for the last couple of years. So we are, we're happy to, what, what's your pleasure? Would you like for us to start out trying to invite them all to a dinner meeting, or you want to do a luncheon like we did last year? And a tour of a school? But, you know, as I said, we've had real difficulty getting significant participation due to conflicts, et cetera. And doing one, which is generally what the board wants to do, has proved very difficult to get broad representation.
You know, I think the one that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember the one that got the most participation was the one that we had at Christiansburg High School in which the culinary arts group prepared the meal for us. And it's been a number of years ago, but I remember that we probably had the greatest number of legislators at that one than any other one I've been to.
Was it a joint meeting with the supervisors or was it straight?
No, no. Yeah, yeah, they were there.
It was a joint, and you know, that...
Everybody came, it was great.
Maybe the best way to do it is if we can work it out with the, the board of supervisors, I don't know. But since we have two new schools and, you know, maybe we should explore, maybe we would get better participation from our legislators, and it's sad that we've really got to say that, but, um, if we were to invite them to one of the, to do new schools, they'd be interested in coming to the new schools and then, you know, having the culinary arts group prepare the meal for, for them and, and the board. But I think that we need to, to start working on this now before, because their calendar's going to fill up quickly as the closer it gets to election.
Right, which, quite frankly, you probably won't get anyone until after the election.
Exactly.
Right.
Of course not.
Did we do that after the election?
Well, I think it was an off-election year, possibly.
Was it? Yeah. Remember.
Well, I think it would be best to hold off until after the election. Absolutely. I assume that's what we would be doing.
Well, I mean, this is the BSBA Take Your Legislator to School Month, so we're trying to do it within that...
November is.
November.
I was going to say, I was thinking it was November anyway, because it was some kind of something we took home that was like Thanksgiving. I can't remember what it was, but...
We didn't know, I think it was a couple of them, we didn't actually know.
It was a pumpkin loaf or something, wasn't it? It was.
Yeah, it was.
Yes.
So can we start thinking in terms of November, earliest November?
I have just one question. If we're going to have the event after the election, whom would you like to be invited? The, if there is someone who is not re-elected, it gets a little technically difficult.
Say that again, I can...
Is it not?
It's not really projecting.
You, um, you, you invite the people who will be representing us next January?
In January.
Right.
And so we wouldn't be able to invite them until after the election?
Right.
So calendar...
Pardon?
...becomes a bit of an issue.
You can't invite them until their election's over, because they won't know if they're going to...
Yes. Most of the time, I think people would, they would be open to coming, I do, the newly-elected people.
It, it's not a matter of whether they're open.
But the point is, we don't know who to invite.
I know, we have to wait till after the election.
That's what she's saying.
I know, yeah.
And then you're right into budget cycle and, you know, all those kind of things. Let, let us look at what we've done over the last three years, because I don't remember the one off the top of my head that you're talking about.
It wasn't, I don't think you were here.
Okay.
You weren't, I don't know if it even, it may go back.
I know we had a fairly well-attended one that we did as a joint meeting with the supervisors, but it was when we were in the throes of trying to find money to build schools. And it was fairly, um, well-attended. So sometimes attendance is very issue-driven, but, uh, let us, let us take a look and we'll filter some ideas back to you.
All right.
Because the supervisors, I think every year, do one where they invite all the entities, and this board has said, we don't necessarily want to have our issues just thrown in there with the towns and everyone else, is to have something that's either just the board, school board, or invite the supervisors to.
Okay. We'll take a look at some ideas. I suspect that you'll have, you know, some of our legislative delegation who will attend the open houses and dedications for the new schools.
Hope so. Are we going to invite those who are, um, already in office and those who are running, or just those that are in office?
We're going to put out a general announcement.
Thank you.
And anybody can come that wants to. If you're connected to Montgomery County, you're welcome to attend.
Super.
And, and my preference would be evening.
Mine too.
Well, we've looked at Sunday afternoon, three o'clock, for the dedications.
Oh, well, that's, I'm okay with that.
Mm-hmm, but for the, for the meeting with the su, with the delegation, we'll try evening. Last time, we got one person, no, we got two.
Two.
And it was a luncheon.
So evening may be better.
We'll try evening.
Early evening, I mean, if we have in school...
Announcements and information.
Um, I, I don't know that this is new business or not. I passed out this Virginia Tech Principles of Community for your thoughts and possibly to discuss whether we'd like to put something like this in our buildings. And you don't have to look at it now, but I would like to suggest that this might be, not that it would be the same, but so that we would have on our wall in each building something about our policy, of who we are, and...
I thought we already had it.
We already have it.
In this, we have these in our schools? No, I'm suggesting we have this, as people enter our school building, they see what a policy...
You're talking about the thing that's taped to your...
No, this that I've handed out.
We want to...
They have our mission, they have our vision, and they have your overarching statement about preparing students for the future.
In each school?
In each school, they have that.
As we walk in? I haven't ever noticed.
I doubt that it's prominently displayed right when you walk into the front door, but it is well-known within the school.
Well, I would hope that our community, as we walk in the front doors, would see what we are and who we are. Yeah. And, um, I'm very grateful for getting these schools open on time, Ms. Blackburn, everyone, Dan, everyone that's worked on making this happen. Our families are so excited about getting into these schools and being back into schools, and it's just really, the upbeatness has been very exciting. I went to several schools today, and our teachers and staff are really excited, and I just can't thank everybody enough on behalf of the whole board. It's, it's just been amazing. Woo!
Is that it?
And I would also like to agree with Ms. Blackburn that we have got to reach out to our elected officials regarding public education in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I really believe that many of our leaders want to undo this public system. Uh, historically, Virginia's had a struggle. We didn't get public kindergartens until, what, sixties? And, uh, I just believe strongly that we must act on behalf of our students and our future for public education. Thanks very much, Ms. Blackburn. Thank you. And how we do it, let's get organized, let's, I don't know, but I know we've got to do it.
Any other announcements, information? Um, I would like to echo somewhat of Ms., what, all Ms. Britton, all Britton said. I think a real thank you for the middle school teachers, who had to endure moving, as well as the high school teachers over the past three years, and what they've had to endure at the old Christiansburg. Uh, the families, the, uh, it's, it's been a struggle over the past three years, um, to get to where we have, are today, and, uh, I'd like to thank them for their patience, and I'd like to thank them for hanging out with us and, and getting to this end goal. And I think tomorrow starts a new beginning in many communities. Um, and I cannot thank the superintendent and their staff enough.
Right.
Uh, I always said on time, on budget. I always said it was a beautiful day to build a school, even though when it was raining. So it's, uh, congratulations to all of those on the staff that have worked so hard, Dan, there's a lot of people, and I, I don't want to name, because we're going to miss a few, but, um, I, there's a lot of behind the scenes that our community don't, has not seen or realized about the sweat. Um, you've got the community groups, you've got the committees. The committees were very important and very critical in both of the schools and helping, uh, you know, when you look at the, the inside of the building, that's a lot of the committee work that got together and picked out colors and picked out furniture, and they need to be recognized and they need to be applauded for, uh, the beautiful insides that we have of the school. So, uh, it was a joint effort, um, it's been a lot of pain and gnashing of teeth, but if anybody, when they walk into those schools tomorrow, can't smile and be happy, you know, I'm not interested in listening to any naysayers for anymore. We did it, and we did it well. And everybody should walk in there tomorrow with a big smile on their face and pat themselves on their back for a job well done, including the people sitting around us dies.
Right, and here's to the windows at Blacksburg High School. I've heard that over and over again, we're so happy to have windows!
Congratulations to the superintendent and her staff on a job well done. Good job.
Well, let's, let's, I appreciate that too, but let's not forget those laborers.
Oh, yeah.
Because if they weren't in there day and night, making sure the plan was executed, it wouldn't be there.
Yeah, they definitely worked out, we'd drive by on Sundays and see them there working, so they were twenty-four, seven almost, and at these sites making it happen. So, yeah, that's a very good point, Ms. Franklin. Any other announcements and information? Upcoming school board meeting? You see that there's upcoming meeting on September the seventeenth, and the agenda there, and another one on October the first.
Just one question, I couldn't remember it, I should have wrote it down. Um, do we have a, any joint meetings coming up with the supervisors?
There, there was a goal to try to meet more often in, in joint session, but I don't know that any dates have been confirmed. No, we'll, we'll reach out tomorrow to them and see what's on the radar.
Move adjourn.
Got a motion for adjournment, news second.
Second.
All in favor, signature five, stay in eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.